Order, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge.
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a return of our Animal Resource Center talking about the adoption program.
Yay. We have a little kitty here.
It's been awhile. Sure.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Melinda.
Hi, I'm Melinda. I work at the Animal Resource Center and who I have here is Uma. She is our nine-year-old dog that we are trying to find a foster for.
Oh, trying to find a foster, okay.
Yeah, she has some health issues.
Oh.
She has seizures.
Okay.
Hi, cutie.
She's on medication and it's managed very well.
Good.
But she needs a special home.
Okay. Look at that face.
And she's a little jewel. She doesn't like being in her cage, so she tends to rub her nose a little bit. We tend to try to get her out a lot, so she doesn't rub her nose too much.
She's a cutie. How old do you think she is?
She's nine.
Nine, aww.
Yep. Oh, my goodness. She is.
How long has she been with you?
Three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So not only do we look for forever homes, but we look for fosters as well.
Correct.
So I don't know that everybody realizes that, but oh, look how sweet she is.
Yes.
Yeah. Wish I had time for her. Well, I already talked to her. I already talked to her. She's adorable. She'd fit right in with my menagerie.
She would.
She would, I know. And with many other people as well.
So anybody...
I said, there's gotta be somebody in this room. No pressure. No, she's adorable. So tell us what's going on at the shelter.
Well, we just wrapped up Wilmer Hill. It was the 24th of September. We had, well, there were two dogs adopted out, adults. And then we have Trunker Treat.
Trunker Treat, yeah.
Trunker Treat, sorry, coming up, October 22nd, this weekend. And we're gonna take the mobile clinic out.
Oh, good.
And treats, of course. We're not sure if we're taking a dog, are we, Steve?
They have the no pets unit.
Okay, no pets.
With the costumes and all the talk.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so no animals, but our mobile clinic's going out with us, not the animals, so.
Oh, that's fun.
Yeah.
Tell us a little bit about the mobile unit.
Well, the mobile unit was meant to go out into the public of greater need to get to people instead of people having to come and get vaccines and stay neutering and stuff like that. So we're hoping it's gonna go out and...
To fully, yeah.
Yeah, to get it fully out and running.
Yep, that's great.
Yeah, it's needed, so, yes.
So if people were to want to foster, who do they contact?
It would be our outreach coordinator, Steve, or they can just call the Montgomery County Animal Resource Center. And we can set them up. They have to fill out a foster application and then go through a foster class and then come in and meet the dog and make sure it's, you know, what they wanna foster or, you know, rescue, adopt, whatever.
Okay. How long does the foster class take?
Hmm, two hours, maybe?
Oh, okay.
A volunteer class, sorry.
So it's not like a semester?
No, 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 it's short. It's short.
Yeah, I was thinking weeks, you know?
No, no, it's short.
Okay. Great, awesome. And so anybody that's interested can come and tour to look at any other pet that they'd like to...
Yes.
Dog that they'd like to... And what are your hours?
We're open Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 6:00, Saturday 10:00 to 4:00. We are open on Sundays, but it's only for lost and downed, so that's from 11:00 to 1:00.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a nice selection of lovely doggies that would like to find a forever home?
I think so. Yeah, yeah, we have a mostly, you know, medium to large dogs.
Okay.
A few smaller, but mostly medium to large.
I heard we just adopted out some puppies.
Yes, we did. Yep.
So people can go online and actually look to see through Pet Harbor, right?
Correct.
Can you explain how to do that?
So the best way for me to explain would be to go onto our personal website, which is mcanimals.org. And then you click over to the adopts, scroll down and click animals, view animals that are up for adoption in the ARC. And it'll show the dog's picture and their animal number. When you click on it, it'll tell you the dog's age and sex. Then you can call me or one of the other clerks and we can answer the questions about what we see behavior-wise and if it has any health issues or anything like that.
And don't we also show dogs that are not quite ready for adoption, but close?
Those are on the lost and bound side, not on the adoption.
Okay.
But yes.
Right, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to that little girl. She's a cutie.
Well, hopefully she finds a foster parent, like, within the next 24 hours.
Yeah, we had a previous dog that was fostered and she was a success and found a new home.
Good.
So it does work. It tends to de-stress them and they can... You really get to learn whether they like cats because we get that ass along, you know?
Yeah.
Nope, no, I don't know, so, yeah. So thank you for letting me come.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing her. You know, we like when you bring the dogs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Bob.
We have lights on after-school day. Maya Dorsey. We have a proclamation for you, but would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you so much. Maya Dorsey, I'm with Learn to Earn Dayton. I'm the Director of Equity and Collaborative Impact. I helped to lead the K-12 in-school and after-school work here in Montgomery County. And October 20th, this National Lights on After-School Day, we recognize the importance of after-school. We have a summer and after-school collaborative here in Montgomery County that Learn to Earn is a convener for. We have over a half a dozen, a dozen and a half of providers that are quality providers here in the county. So we wanna recognize and we know that after-school was really important before the pandemic, but it's especially important as we're moving out because we know that the teachers, and as a former educator myself, teachers can't do it all, especially with the intervention needs being so great as they are right now. So we really wanna encourage for families and for our stakeholders in the community to help lift up after-school because we know that level of intervention is really important in closing the academic gaps for our kids.
Excellent.
That's great.
Well, to acknowledge that, we do have a proclamation for you, so I will go ahead and read it. And Montgomery County's Joint Strategic Plan declares our commitment to investing in our youngest citizens through programs like Learn to Earn, a nonprofit cradle-to-career initiative that supports students from birth through college and career. And Learn to Earn's Summer and After-School Collaborative focuses on increasing access to after-school programming for youth through the community. After-school programming, just as you've just said, is a critical resource for working parents that keeps their children safe and also prepares them to succeed in higher education. It's not just babysitting. It's not that pylon stretch and in the workforce. Lights on after-school, the national celebration of after-school programs has been held since 2000. I didn't realize that. And as you already stated, it's going to be held this year on Thursday, October 20th. And the whole idea is to promote the importance of not just after-school, but quality after-school programs in the lives of our children, families, and communities. And Learn to Earn's evidence-based programming allows all children enrolled in after-school programming to grow in several areas, including social, emotional learning, academic behavior, attendance, family engagement, and healthy lifestyles. So it's more than just the books.
Yes.
It's the whole child. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim October 20th, 2022, as Lights on After-School Day here in Montgomery County. And we urge all citizens to recognize Learn to Earn and their community partners for their very important work. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I think we'd like to take a picture with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maya. You wanna come up, move though down there?
Yeah.
Go down there.
Okay.
Going down here?
Yep.
He went on back.
Now, County Engineer Paul Griner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We just have two items today. The first is Resolution 22-1544 to set the date of November 8th, 2022, for the viewing and November 15th, 2022, for the hearing for the Free Pike Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the city of Trotwood. And the city will be happy about this. 1545 to amend the agreement with Eagle Bridge Company for the Third Street Bridge Replacement Project in the city of Dayton by extending the funding date through October 20th of 2023.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1546. Participate and act as a sub-grantee in a grant received by the Dayton Police Department from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, for funding of the Montgomery County OVI Task Force.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Common Police Court.
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1547, authorizing an agreement with the Pimwill Group to provide training on the habitation, empowerment, accountability, therapy curriculum in an amount not to exceed $14,600 through November 5th, 2022.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court.
Under Juvenile Court, we...
He's here.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you. On behalf of Anthony Capizzi, Administrator Judge, we have one item, that's 22-1548, to accept a continuation voca grant for the funding of staff, equipment, contractual, and travel costs for the CASA program in an amount not to exceed $133,637 through September 30th of 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, County Administrator.
Thank you. Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on October 11th, 2022, Resolution 1549, approval of bills, and Resolution 1550, approval of travel and expenses. Both those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a variety of resolutions for you today, beginning with Resolution 1551. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 1552 authorizes a letter of understanding with the Ohio State University on behalf of OSU Extension for the leasing of 6,899 square feet of space at the Calumet Center through September 30th of 2023 with options to renew. 1553 authorizes a purchase from A1 Sprinkler and Systems Integration for equipment and professional services for the solid waste transfer station tipping floor camera system in an amount not to exceed $84,127. 1554 authorizes a change order to the agreement with Brixian Meyer Incorporated for consultant services for the Human Resource Department by increasing the original amount by $5,000 for a revised total of $11,500 through December 31st of 2022. 1555 solicits bids for the Calumet Gym Floor Removal Project at an estimated cost of $120,000. And 1556 rejects the bids and re-advertises for a mobile camera trailer for the Office of Emergency Management. 15, I'm sorry, the next two resolutions authorize agreements, beginning with 1557, and that's with Donald McCarthy Enterprises for Maintenance and Supplies for the Public Defender's Office in an amount not to exceed $882 through September 30th of 2023. And last is 1558 with P&amp;R Communications Service Incorporated for the purchase of back hall radio equipment and services for the back hall radio replacement project for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $115,193.30 through December 31st of 2023.
Move to approve.
Second, and I just have a question. On the Calumet Gym Floor, what are they gonna replace it with? Do we know yet?
Tyler, talk about the, why we have to take it up in the first place because of the mercury component.
Yeah, there's, the gym floor's old, so there's mercury in the gym floor.
Oh, that's right, mercury. That's, I forgot. I knew there was something about that, okay.
Yeah, once we get the bids, we'll know for certain what we will be replacing that with.
Okay.
Commissioners, we actually replaced several of the floors in the old DDS facilities.
Yeah, I remember that, okay.
And there was about four of them that had it in it. I think we were already done, either two or three of them. This should be the last one of the DDS facilities that we have to replace.
Because we did the one up in Clayton.
Yes.
That still is.
Yep, we did both of those up there.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
That's all.
I second it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have two resolutions today. Both of them are to approve the plan, specifications, estimated cost, and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities. First is Resolution 1559, Bayside and Barrett Water Main Replacement Phase II Project at an estimated cost of $3,231,200. The last one is Resolution 1560, Dellwood Estates Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $918,550.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Human Services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Human Services, under Human Services Planning and Development, we have Resolution 1561, authorizing an agreement with Wellesky Corporation, FKA Bowman Systems LLC to provide computer system and data access to the Homeless Management Information System, or HEMIS, in an amount not to exceed $63,057 through March 31st, 2023. We have Resolution 1562, accept a grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System in the amount of $524,603. We also have Resolution 1563, submit a supplemental consolidated application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the OH505 Dayton-Kettering Montgomery County Continuum of Care in an amount not to exceed $7,540,555. Under the Department of Jobs and Services, we have Resolution 1564, authorizing an agreement with Mill Creek of Maggie Treatment Center for substitute care services through March 31st, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Commissioners, as an FYI, I just wanted to let you know that both these homeless grants are really huge for our replacement housing and our continued housing components as far as the homeless system in Montgomery County. And the team has done a fantastic job on applying for these grants.
And then on 63, that's another submission for more, correct?
That's correct. Both, and actually on 62, we'll have additional $100,000 that comes with that bonus dollars. That's gonna allow us to do rapid rehousing in that space.
Great, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Did we go... Yeah, I think, all right, I lose track. All right, Business Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, I have one resolution for you today. Under Community and Economic Development, Resolution 22-1565 authorizes an economic development government equity edge agreement with the city of Dayton for the Oregon East Bainbridge Street Building Project in amount not to exceed $125,000 or 1.42% of the total project cost, whichever is less.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And I can't remember, which one is this?
This one's moved around a little bit, as far as what they were gonna use the money for. Bainbridge, if I remember correctly, is across from the Italian restaurant on Fifth Street, next to the post office.
Yeah, right.
So I'm not sure if they're expanding or extending this roadway because it is a dead end or they're just refurbishing it for one reason or another. I don't know.
The original thought was to put a parking garage there and then build upon the plans that would allow for more street walking on the second part of the Oregon District. So they're gonna start building that part of, across from the restaurant, across from the Chinese restaurant and the Italian restaurant there, start to build that front, Franco's, start to build that front.
Okay, all right.
Under County Commissioners, we have Resolution 1566, appoint Mary Frick to the Water Services Appeals Board filing or filling an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do not have any comments by citizens. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really don't have any comments, but I'd just like to give a shout out to our facilities team. And I know many of you were on the elected officials' call this Monday and you had an opportunity to see some of the projects that our facilities team is doing. But it's not just the new projects. This project here is an example, this room that we're in now. But we've got new projects, and then we've got our existing upgrades, upgrades of HVAC, of restrooms, of boilers throughout the county. And then also, what many people don't realize, this facility is such a large group. We've also had people that clean and disinfect our building and keep it clean for both the public and for our employees. And then also our grounds crew. Our grounds crew does an amazing job of the multiple facilities that we have across the county to make sure that our grounds are manicured and that they landscaped and that they look very nice for the public. So I just wanna give them a shout out. Thanks to the entire team. Phil and his entire team do a great job. Phil Miller. And then also Jocelyn and the entire facilities team, they do a great job.
Absolutely.
Yep, they do.
Sure do. Transforming our buildings right before our eyes.
Transformational.
Absolutely. Well, it's been a busy, busy time. I was in the, I participated in the suicide prevention walk on Sunday and we gathered in front of Day Air Ball Park. And we've had, I must say that the weather has been wonderful for all the walks that have been taking place. Beautiful weather, no rain, and hopefully it stays that way for the ones that are coming up. But I do thank everyone there who participated. You know, that's a crisis in our community. And it appeared to me, thousands of people, they raised at the time about, close to $50,000 for the effort.
That's great.
And so that was wonderful. I did not take, I was not able to participate in the one on Saturday, same place. Did either of you? I did not this year. Make strides against breast cancer.
However, we had a great presence from our employees at the Office of Reentry. Our team there went, they go, every year, our employees went, some of our returning citizens went. And they all looked great in their pink. I've got some great pictures of them.
Good, awesome.
Yeah, so, you know, that too, those two walks are so incredible, you know, making strides.
And the week before was Alzheimer's.
And you're right, it's been beautiful.
Yeah.
They're great causes.
As we all know, this is the season of walks.
It is.
And such great causes. So over and over, it is interesting, totally different networks of people because people of all different parts of our county are impacted by each of these causes in different ways. But it is always so good to see everyone come back together for these important causes. This month is actually National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it was actually launched nationwide in 1987 as a way to connect and unite individuals and organizations working on domestic violence issues. It also raises awareness of the issue, but it is, this week, I'm told, is Week Without Violence. And we have turned our administration facility purple this week. So if you drive by, you should see purple lights in honor of that Week Without Violence. And if you or someone you know is experiencing domestic violence, we want you to know that there are resources available. You do not have to be a victim. The Artemis Center is one local organization that offers domestic violence support 24 hours a day. And one can call them at 937-461-Help or online, go to artemiscenter.org. And I know we attended a breakfast fundraiser last week. Filled the Sinclair Great Hall with individuals supporting this cause. And I must tell you, there was a young man that shared his story of what, you know, what he had undergone throughout his childhood. And he is now, this is often females working at Artemis, but he is actually a male member of their staff. And so he's turning his life experience in turning it around and doing good. So very, very heart-touching story and quite the courage that one has to stand up before a hall of that size and share a lifetime of trauma that he had both endured and is overcoming and healing from. So we don't want any other victims in our community. If you know of anyone or anyone listening, please get help. There is help and there is a path and every step of the way, someone there to support you and get you to the other side.
I was just gonna add about that young man, you know, we often hear the story of how Artemis helps women, you know, escaping domestic violence. But to hear his story of what the children go through was heartbreaking. But he also made it very hopeful that he's okay, you know, he's okay, he still is in counseling. And but, you know, it's those things that you don't think of often as the fallout, you know? The children, his siblings, his strained relationship now with his younger siblings. And so that was really good. Artemis has been around for, you know, probably close to 30 years. And every year, you know, the stories are heartbreaking, yet we hopeful. And so this week with No Violence Week, what are they calling it? A Week Without Violence.
It would be wonderful.
It would be wonderful. But again, Artemis is, we're fortunate to have Artemis in our community because not every community has an organization that is there to help people with domestic violence issues. And they are, you know, they'll take you everywhere from, you know, finding you a place to live or to stay, short-term, and then the counseling that's just incredible, so it's always a good event.
Yeah, yeah. And where they are, they're just a fantastic building. I've been there and talked to Jane and the staff is great and the different rooms that they have to try to work through, some especially children's problems. It's great. Well, on another note, well, this Saturday, we had the Fall Styrofoam Recycling Event. And Matt, I think they said we had about 120 vehicles went through there and we almost filled a whole truckload. So it was pretty busy. So I'm just glad we were able to do it. And we're so thankful, though, to the community's participation in these events. And also another thank you goes out to our partners at Five Rivers Metro Parks. And they had a nice, a few people there volunteering. That was great, very nice people. Echo Development and the city of Dayton for their partnership in this past event. You can always learn more about our recycling initiatives on our website at www.mcswd, that's mcswd.org. Now, our next event is January 7th. I'm hoping that's not too cold of a day, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Activity Center Park in Centerville. So everyone that gets big, big gifts that's wrapped in styrofoam, hold on to them for over the holidays. And we'll see you on January the 7th. Thank you.
So I wanted to point out one of the resolutions, the Juvenile Court Resolution. You know, we always read through these sometimes quickly and we don't have time to comment on each one, but that's one I wanna point out because the money was for CASA. And the volunteers, can you come up and talk a little bit about what they do and why it's so important for our Juvenile Court?
So we have volunteers, both that are attorneys and we also have volunteers from the community. Different type cases warrant different types of volunteers. But volunteers come in, spend numerous hours volunteering, continuing education to continue to make sure that they're representing the child's best interests and making sure the child is, as their voice is being heard in different cases that are heard in juvenile court.
So how do, how does the court decide which child needs a CASA person to walk with them on their journey?
So that, I'm not so sure about myself. I do apologize for that.
That's okay.
But generally, the magistrate or attorney or the judge that's hearing the case will do an assigned counsel for certain cases and that becomes the attorney CASA. And then we have a volunteer services department. And then we have a volunteer services department that, uh, we just recently formed, um, that combines some of our units together so that we could expand the services for that. So they, they work with more of the private cases.
Okay. Well, I know it's wonderful. For years, we've gone, you know, to the banquets where the volunteers are recognized and, um, you know, i- it's just, you know, it takes a special person to be able to do that, but I know you guys are always looking for more volunteers.
Yes, we are.
So that's why I wanted to highlight that. CASA volunteers that, uh, go and become a voice for our young juvenile.
Yes.
And it, and it could be kids that haven't ever been in, in the system oftentimes. And nor are they juvenile delinquents. That's not necessarily, you know, it's, it's anybody that needs that, um, that help to get through the process and kind of be a little guardian in some ways for them. So, thank you.
And we, we, uh, actually operate social media, um, over at the court. So, uh, we have, um, a Facebook page and, uh, Instagram page that, uh, we try to maintain. And, um, if anyone's interested in volunteering to be a CASA, we always welcome that opportunity.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, you guys also work hand-in-hand with our Children's Services Division.
Yeah.
And we really appreciate, uh, the partnership and the collaboration there. Uh, the system as a whole wouldn't work without that partnership. So, thank you.
It does make a village, as they say.
It does, right? And the drug therapy, I mean, the family treatment, I guess I should say. Um, it all works together, and, and we're, we're a great team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell the judges we said hello.
Appreciate that.
So, right now, as we're sitting here, our job fair is taking place across the street at Sinclair. And the three of us were just over there, and, um, you know, to have almost 100, different organizations there, uh, is pretty incredible. So it's employers, but one of the things I like about the last couple that we've done is we've invited all of our departments. Uh, Kyle was manning the booth. I'm pointing to you. Kyle was manning the booth quite well, um, over there. Um, but how many, I would say we had probably eight different departments there.
At least.
At least. And then other elected officials had their own booths. Uh, the sheriff, the recorder, a couple others.
Juvenile Court.
Juvenile Court had, yes, they sure did. So, um, you know, these employers, including county employers, we're looking for talent. We're looking for, um, people who want to work, and I know we have that talent right here in Montgomery County. So if you're watching this live, because so many people do watch it on Facebook, um, I'm sorry, trying to say it, say it without laughing. How many of you are watching right now? Okay, so, for those of you that are watching, you, okay, you, darn it.
It's better viewership on TV.
Okay. Well, true, but is it live on TV? Because you only have till four o'clock, so...
Saying that would have sent a humor.
What I was saying to Facebook watchers, um, you have until four o'clock to get over to Sinclair. But we do these often. And, you know, we're just so thankful that our employers in the community, uh, whether it's healthcare industry, hospitality, IT, military, of course, local government, logistics and manufacturing, and a lot more, uh, there are opportunities in our county. Uh, last I heard, for the region, I think we have 33,000 open positions that we need to fill. And we have a lot of jobs coming because of Chris and his wonderful economic development team. And so we have to, stop. Don't make faces when I compliment you.
I'm merely smiling, Commissioner. Thank you for the...
Okay, all right. Um... This is normal face. Anyway, um, there's all kinds of jobs. And it's everything from entry-level positions to, uh, jobs that require skilled training. We, we were, you know, talking to some of the people, I mean, uh, even, even those that do, um, kind of high-tech manufacturing, they'll train. You know, they're, I talked to a couple of people, like, we bring them in and we'll train them. And we also have, we have training dollars that these employers can use too, to get people trained. So, um, again, for those of you that can't make it today or didn't see this until later, um, if you need assistance to find a job, you can contact the JobCenter.org, or stop by the Job Center on Edwin Moses. Or our newest addition to our, um, job-seeking opportunities is our West Town Employment Opportunity Center. And that's on West Third Street in Dayton and West Town Shopping Center, in the old Aldi's. And it's beautiful now. So, um, let's, let's keep focusing on employment and how we get people into the, all of our open jobs.
And there was also, the prosecutor's office was there.
Oh, I forgot.
Just to let you know.
They were there. They need prosecutors.
All right. Uh, I don't think we have anything else. So our, uh, next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held next Tuesday, October 25th at 1:30 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
And, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a fantastic week.